I didn't do my call over the windows. Back in the inside.
How was your walk?
Yes, that just fell out.
And the stairwell is 118 degrees.
Yeah.
Won't be a bad weekend.
It won't be.
So you have something to look forward to?
I do.
We're ready.
We'll have the meeting right down in the lobby.
Wow. I see that green though. It's really shades. Green. Laura Chukubiyak, something must be going on. Something important must be happening. Some sort of expansion of something.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the work session for April 18th. We don't have a long agenda, but we're going to keep it moving. So the first item on the agenda is accepting a grant to design the Fitzwater Bike Route. Mr. Molds, come on up.
I appreciate you letting me go first with my two items. It'd be a hard act to follow after Chief Duncan's item there. The first item is accepting a grant for design of the Fitzwater Bike Route. This is the third grant that we're getting from the state for doing this. And it's planning out the design of the improvements for the bike route that would extend up all the way to Pemberton, Fitzwater, Parsons. I think the idea is eventually making connections with Pemberton Park as far as bringing in. And this is also the first bike route that we've got on the west side of the city. So it's real nice. One of the reasons we pursued that is because we've got a lot going on over there with potential with the Marina, with paving projects that were going to occur over there, and some of the work that we just did up in Royal Farms area. So the timing is really good for doing this and we wanted to get that design going on. So we have a resolution and then the standard MOU, the language that we get from the state for the grant.
Any questions about the bike route grant?
No.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Can we just move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is equally exciting. The DNR Waterway Improvement Fund Grant Acceptance. We have a, Marina has a pump out station for boats that come in to visit Salisbury and they have to have a holding tank onboard and we offer a service at the Marina for pumping out those tanks. It's part of the Clean Vessel Act program that the state has. The unit that's there is about 10 years old and due for replacement. DNR, actually one of the visits they had at the Marina recommended we apply for a grant to get that replaced. We've got quotes and everything for that. Submitted that for the department for their approval and they've given us the award of the grant $9,685 for replacement of the pump out station. It's for the equipment. We'll be doing the installation with our own crews.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Molds.
Slam dunk.
Enjoy the outside. Mr. Holland?
Does your vehicle start today, Mr. Holland?
Sorry, Chief, sir.
Good evening. City's recently received another request for annexation. This is located Route 13 North and on Dagsboro Road. In other words, it's right across from the state police barracks. It consists of approximately 2.4 acres. It's, this site is within the city's municipal growth plan. The request includes, included a concept development plan which I provided you all. As a petitioner, they paid the required annexation fees. It will include the demolition of an existing convenience store. The tanks have already been removed from the site. And also construction of approximately 18,900 square foot retail store with other site upgrades. Got some guests here today from Bowler Engineering. Chris Mandoro and Dave Kuklich. They're going to be providing you with some enlarged site plans and probably elevations of the project and also from Penn Tech Ventures. You've got Ted Donnell and Ed Baker who are here if they can answer any questions. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them and let them do their presentation.
Now the set of lights. Yeah, we can put them on there. It's going to get hot, sorry.
I was just wondering if they could see.
You guys okay with the light going? Okay.
Do you need another chair?
I don't think this is working. I think the heat's on. Do you not think the heat's on? There's no way.
It's warm in here.
I actually feel a draft.
Do you?
But that could just be me.
It probably is. It's a warm draft or a cold draft. It's not, it's not working. I feel hot there too.
Sorry for the temperature.
Every time we do one of these, we just turn the heat up.
No problem. Absolutely. Thank you, Bill. Chris Mandoro with Bowler Engineering. Partially responsible for the plan to see here today. We've been working with Jack Lennox and Bill on this parcel for about a month now. Taking a look at a particular tenant here. Can't disclose it at this point, but it is a retail use, a grocery use that we're looking to put at the corner here. Talking with Bill, trying to get a good fit, something good for the city as well as for the tenants that we have in line here. Done through, taking a look at the general commercial ordinance. It's out there. Look to design the site in general conformance with those requirements. Looking ahead, trying to integrate the project with some of the surrounding uses. Some of the changes we've gone through, looking to situate the building close, somewhat close to Route 13. There are some restrictions now with the width of the lot. The Route 13 is pretty narrow up there, so we've situated the building towards the rear. Provided some parking spaces alongside, all in compliance with the town code to meet those requirements. Proposed sewer and water, we've talked with Bill. It is accessible within Dickerson Lane across the street. Easy point to tie. So. No problem. So that's kind of what we're looking to do here. Work with the city to provide the best product for our tenant and for the city.
Okay. Questions?
Let's talk for a minute about that light, that road and that traffic.
Sure. So we are still in preliminary stages of the traffic. We do need to go to S H A. We've not reached out to them to date. Traffic consultant's taken a look at the queuing located on Dagsboro Road. The impacts to the access point. At this point, we don't have any, any firm answers. But we will be looking at that as part of our analysis.
As we put together a package for the city council to choose to go forward, we have to get, we have to evaluate all the submissions. It may be that there's a right-hand turning lane on Dagsboro Lane into the site. There may be a need for pedestrian crossover, Dagsboro sidewalks, and have some preliminary analysis from S H A by that point as well.
I would certainly, that's, that's a good point because there is some residential there and even when you go down, there's apartment complex behind Target and there's Mill Pond Village and a lot of those people do walk and it's not, you know, there's not a, you know, certainly north into town is not a friendly place for walkers.
Really good way up the lane.
The staff's current review, you know, the staff always does a quick, I shouldn't say quick, but a preliminary review of the site. Their comments centered principally on aligning Dickerson Lane with the site's entrance.
The staff's comments centered on the need to align Dickerson Lane with the proposed access point. So they're, they're not offset. And that actually helps with pedestrian crossing and allows for traffic to move safer and easier through the area. To some extent, the extent to which the building can be moved closer to 213 to sort of line up in a uniform, harmonious way with the other development along the road. And there'll be landscaping and substantial enhancements to that, a streetscape as well through there.
There's something, could you elaborate on the harmonious way that things are put along Route 13?
Well, they've not always been that harmonious in the past, right?
You can match one, you're harmonious.
But there, there has been recent development over the last decade that have, has a uniform setback and you think of some of the shopping centers. From the hotel moving into the Old Navy north up into Dagsboro. And so there has to be some type of thought about how this intersection's major sort of gateway into the corridor responds to that, that pattern that's established there. So we'll be challenging the applicant to think through that a little bit. The site is oddly shaped. There's no doubt about it. It's narrower up on the highway, gets wider as you go back. Sites like this require that large trucks drive through them and provide access to a loading and unloading zone. These are all complications that we'll no doubt encounter as we just go to think through how this site would lay out for you.
My first reaction, and I'm not a planner, but to me, parking lots are not as attractive as buildings can be. And I would, I've seen some where they're flipped and the parking is in the back, if you will, which is its own entrance, but what fronts is attractive on the road front and then the parking is in the back. That might also move the queuing line back further off of 13 down Dagsboro and help with some of that turning.
Might also help with getting trucks in and out that are delivering.
Yep, and you're going to have the trucks in the front. You're going to have trucks closer to the.
On the end, maybe.
It's on the end now, but I mean if it's. It's all about the design of the building too, so.
Sure. And that's correct. You know, we do have a particular tenant in mind and this is the prototype, something that they're looking to move forward with. Near future, definitely looking to expedite the approvals here to the greatest extent practical. Still work with the city to provide a good product here. The challenge we face, as Chris had said about the property, it is restrictive in the width up front. So having this particular tenant, something that we're looking to get in place relatively quickly presents a challenge, especially looking in the future to connecting to potential lots, potential additional lots in the future north on 13. Making sure that we do have that connectivity if, if that is so.
So you can't, you said trucks going in.
Well, they're going to have, depending on the business.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. You can't tell us anything about.
They're on the, they're on the south side now, correct? Right there.
That's north side. Correct. That's the north side.
No, you're fine.
So the loading zone is naturally screened by the building from the roads. So you can't see it unless you're standing right there. So currently the truck comes in on Dagsboro, makes a left into the site, picks another left and backs in. 67-foot little piece of truck, then relaxes on to Route 13. So that's, that's the challenge with the truck is making sure that the building is situated toward the back. To have this on the building up front is really, trying to navigate the truck and back into that is not feasible.
And we'll absolutely look, to work with the city and make sure it's attractive and landscaped up front. Make sure the sidewalks are, are being supplied as well.
Just to tag on to that, I mean, as you've mentioned, both road fundages will have to be designed according to S H A and city requirements. Pedestrian, furniture improvements, crosswalks, landscaping. As required, we will meet all those requirements.
I mean, this is the welcome to the city, you know?
I thought it was Miller's Mill Pond.
Well. What, no, I'm talking with you.
Yeah, it's actually where, that's north of, right up here, if you go up a little bit, that's the bridge.
Yeah.
So right here beside it is where.
Is that where the gas station is? It's exactly where the gas station is.
No, I meant coming the other way. I just have a couple of questions about, since we can't divulge who the tenant is, can we stop for a second amongst all of us and have a discussion about getting the Walmart in Cambridge instead of the Walmart in Salisbury? This really isn't for you. What are the, what are the levels that this particular?
The aesthetics, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Does this particular client or potential customer come with three levels of what they will build and are we going to ask them to build the least common denominator? And now, not for your purposes, but for our purposes, might be a good time to start scheduling the revisiting of those things so that I can get the awnings and the facade that David Walmart has in Cambridge that looks so nice. And we don't put up the least common denominator here in Salisbury because that's what we will accept. So that's really a question for you, Mr. Heath, to take up with the mayor and Mr. Lennox and the mayor and get that back on our schedule because, again, if we are going to continue to take the least of what they will build, then that's what they will build and we know that places will build other things if they are asked or negotiated to do so. So I just, I just, I want my Walmart awnings.
I recuse myself from that conversation.
You were going to say I want them too. That would be great.
So, Mr. President, if I may. So I think this is an important conversation and as you, as you know, we recently put out for bid, a, well, or for request for proposals, a package that included a design overlay district and seeking guidance on the, what could be a future overlay district for the Route 13 corridor. And really seeking to address this issue of, you know, there, there is not really a design aesthetic that belongs to Salisbury. You know, we long ago gave that away. And so what we have frequently accepted is sort of, you know, we have said, we don't care what it looks like, just bring it here. And I think what we're, you know, what Councilman Iris is speaking to is a desire to have a higher quality of product. And maybe the particular details or architectural aesthetics are not going to be of a certain language to Salisbury because it doesn't exist right now. Maybe we'll get there one day. But I think in the meantime, one of the things that we should be asking ourselves is, you know, are there characteristics that, you know, are, you know, sort of of a higher standard and a higher level and are there, are there architectural details and, and sort of planning and positioning characteristics that we want to begin to expect on the Route 13 corridor that we haven't in the past? And this is obviously mostly single use. I mean, there is some residential behind, but mostly a single use corridor, retail strip. But I think long-term, we'd like to see that become more mixed use. We'd like to see that become more dense. We'd like to see, you know, residential show up on top of retail. You know, if we're not there yet on this site, okay. But, you know, we do want to start thinking about those, those design details and, you know, ensuring that we're getting sort of the best product that we can, especially at the gateway, the northern gateway to Salisbury. So I think it's a valuable conversation to have, Mr. President. I'm happy to have it with council and with, with every single project proposed in Salisbury.
So, Mr. Council President, what are we being asked to do tonight?
We're, now, go ahead.
So this is the introductory hearing. If you had strong objections to even proceeding with this, now would be the time to communicate that to the applicant and to myself and to the staff.
We don't know what the business is. We don't have the S H A.
So what typically happens is if you feel generally comfortable with us proceeding, we work with the applicant to work out those issues. And we bring it back when principal issues are clarified and if a particular issue is who are you working with here, who's the tenant, we should obtain that information.
From my particular standpoint, these are the issues that come up every time. So I'm wondering if there's something we should be doing differently so that, I mean, if I don't know what, what that building is, how am I supposed to know that the traffic study that you bring me four months from now is right for that, is right for that building? I'm not, I'm not trying to make trouble for you. I'm just saying, these are the same questions that come every single solitary time and they don't get answered until after we preliminarily prove.
Well, there'd be no, no requests for approval tonight or until the public hearing well down the road and during which time a traffic analysis could be done so that we can understand these conditions a bit better. The applicant has said it's a grocery store, so we, we do have that in our minds about how access would, would be, would be laid out, configured.
My name is Ted Donnell and I'm the developer of a piece of real estate. We have a, a letter of intent signed with a national tenant to occupy this space on Dagsboro Road. I will tell you, the reason we're here today is we need to gauge whether or not we are a welcome addition on this particular site to the city and to get through the process. I understand that you're, you're a little bit in the vacuum because, well, who is it? How do I know what it is? What we're suggesting is if we make the assumption that it is something that is accretive to the city, can we get through the process? What is the appetite to annex this particular piece of ground, assuming we play by all of the rules? We're not asking you for any definitive statement. What we're saying and asking and requesting this evening is, provided you play by the rules, and we would consider this on this particular parcel of ground. We have site plan work to do. We have landscaping work to do. We will have S H A conversations to do. We've got all of those issues before us, but before we spend, as you all know, it's, it's a significant six-figure number to get to the process to get everything put together. So what I'd like to do is walk out with a comfort level today that, assuming you play by the rules, we're for the annexation. On the other hand, if you say, we're not going to annex it, I would prefer to hear that before I spend any more significant dollars to go forward. And I realize that what we're requesting is just a, a gauge, really. We're not asking for anything other than if we like it, after you've designed it, we'll go for it. If not, today, we hate it, go away, then I understand that too.
Yeah, I don't want you to think that. What I'm thinking is, is I want you to sit in the car leaving the Verizon store on a Friday night and take four lights to get out onto Route 13 at that intersection. Because they're not going to call you and go, who's in charge of this? So I, I think that there are concerns about remaking the same mistakes because I'm just going to smile at you when I say this. Everybody who does this says the exact same thing you did and we appreciate that. And I appreciated that when I was the mayor. But those people are now sitting in even longer lines trying to get out of, of, across the street. So I'm wondering, as people are doing now, trying to take the back way around to, to get to places, that's, that's what we're doing in town now to avoid, to avoid these things.
Our tenant is going to need the frequency of shoppers too.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody wins if, if traffic is compacted and you can't get in and out. So as much as it's a problem for you, it's a problem for us because A, we have to collect the rent. We own the building. They have a 20-year lease with us. And B, they've got to make the sales to make those rents. So there's a lot of work to go. There's, this is the, you know, we're on the one yard line. We've got 99 to go. I think that your team here, we've met in the past and we're slowly going about how do we work together and if we can work together. And we think it's a great community. We think it's a great opportunity. That convenience store is a dog's breakfast today. And I think that as the northern part of your city, it ought to be cleaned up. I can guarantee you, our buildings are brick. They're good looking. They are cutting edge and you'll make, you'll want to tweak it, I'm sure. And I'm sure that we'll have lots of discussion about it.
Excuse me, do you have any pictures of your buildings?
No, I do not. The issue is really today is, are we going to be able to take this to the next step? And I guarantee you, before you have any decision-making, you'll know exactly who it is, you'll have the facade renderings and we will have worked with the city to come up with an appropriate facade.
I guess one of the things here, and I think one of the issues is, you know, importance of lining up Dickerson Lane with that entrance, which again, is going to shift things around because that's your truck entrance and you want your truck to come in. But is Dagsboro Road at that spot, is that a city? That is county. Am I correct? It's county. So it, it would become a part of the city moving forward if this, that piece right there would be our, our, okay. All right. So that, that's the key. So then we can look at, because it's going to have to be redesigned to handle the additional traffic of a grocery store at that spot, so.
We'll do the I T E. We use that I T E trip generation manual. We know exactly how many trips there are per hour, peak hour, Saturday, Sunday, all that kind of thing. It'll all be part of the study.
Okay.
How far is the, the whole lot?
Two and a half acres.
Yeah, 2.1 downtown.
Sorry.
Would you like a lot downtown? Get you on in a really good place where, where what we don't want to do is create deserts.
I will tell you that our, our studies have shown that this is the particular location that we're.
Oh, everybody says that, sir.
I, I think if I could, if I could summarize, I think that one, the immediate question for us is, is there anyone or is, is anyone opposed to annexing this particular property? Period?
No, because I, I think it's, it's, the, the issue is, it's a blight. It's a piece of county property that's a blight. So if we have the opportunity to take it and turning it into something that's ours and that looks good at the entrance of our city, because when most people come into the city, they think it's a city property and it's not. So I think that's going to be a big plus that we actually now have some control over this piece of property.
Mr. Heath, if we could find out where the dumpsters are because this is what will happen. Oddly enough, now it's in District 4. When the dumpsters get dumped at 3:00 in the morning, it's going to be your phone that rings. You, right here, trying to save me some heartache. That's the difficulty of, and I'm for it because Mr. Mr. Chukuyak and, and Mr. Lennox and I drew that line around the city and I said, I will go to there. That's tired. We are having this commercial creep to Delmar, which it will do once, you know, we finish up in this particular area and go, and go to the pond. And there are houses right behind there. And we've done this before with the tractor place and with Mill Pond and with Trooper's Way where the truck comes at 3:00 in the morning and the phone rings and says, why do you do this? Why do you continue to do this? And that may be just the price of, of growth. That may be the price of expanding the accessible base. So I'm willing to go forward, but my expectation is that the administration, Mr. Lennox and Mr. Chukuyak are going to take real people concerns into the room and a concern for what the people who are agreeing to do this, this evening are agreeing to let this go forward and understanding what our lives become at 3:00 in the morning when that happens. It is, I know it's got to go up there. I know the demographics. I know what it says about what's going on there, but again, I will say to you, I could give you, what, 16 pieces of a parking lot to do the exact same thing right downtown and I bet you it won't cost as much, but I'm for it this evening. So just put that in your, if you will, put that in your hat and take that back from wherever, from where you came and see if there's anybody else who wants to, to do the same thing in downtown Salisbury.
Sure. Let's have a, if I may.
Let's have a successful project here.
And then we will sit down and we will talk about.
Oh, no, I wanted to do both.
Next pieces, yeah, absolutely.
Actually, I wanted to do both a minute. I want you to lead with him and badger him about that.
I think, I think, go ahead, Chris.
It just seemed like things were coming to a conclusion. I just wanted to bring up one other thing and this is what we might consider a housekeeping and it's going to have a, there'll be a parallel process with this annexation, one that we don't typically see owing to the fact that the comprehensive land use map shows this parcel as being planned for residential, which was a coding error in the production of the G I S map. The, the adjacent commercial property is also shown as residential. Jack Lennox is here to, to, to answer any questions you might have about it, but a similar coding error appeared on the Route 50 East corridor near Warwick. So these things need to be corrected and they were brought to light on, on account of this applicant. But that process of amending the comprehensive plan. But that process of, of amending the comprehensive plan requires you to hold a public hearing after getting a recommendation from the planning commission, so that process will have to dovetail with this, perhaps leading it by several months. So I wanted you to be aware of that, so that you, you're not surprised, and, and that you know that it was simply a coding error in the G I S map.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So I, I think, to summarize, obviously you've heard our concerns, we all have the same concerns, it's the welcoming portion of coming into our, into our city, and we've been through this before, so the concerns are legitimate. On the other side of it, being a businessman, I understand the other side of it, and the fact that we need to, if you're going to spend six figures, you're going to, you're going to want some degree of comfort. So I guess the point, if I could summarize, is that we are not, this is not giving you the authority that we're going to have with the project, but it's just is that there is a sense that if our desires are met relative to the things that have been expressed, then we would proceed, and we would encourage you to do the same.
Thank you very much, we'll be back for a short.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief, you're up.
That's who goes out at three o'clock when they dump the dumpsters, because it's against our law.
Of the public.
They can start at seven, which isn't much better.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We come before you today to discuss the implementation of a, and the, the implementation of an armored vehicle for the City of Salisbury Police Department. I, I have with me today, one of our senior lieutenants in the department, and also the tactical, the tactical unit commanding officer, Lieutenant Jason Yankelounis. He's going to get into the particulars of this vehicle. To start off, though, I'd like to give you a little bit of background as to why we're I fully understand, I'm fully aware of, of the contentious nature of some of these vehicles. Certainly, we are viewing this equipment as defensive in nature, and we need to understand that our officers, on a routine basis, respond to very high-stress calls for service here in this very urban environment. We looked at ways in which we could build space for them to operate as safely as possible, to reduce the stress levels, and provide the best level of service for our citizens. This is another piece of necessary equipment that we would use to provide safe operating space for our officers, and also to provide safety for our citizens. We looked at reasons for deploying this type of equipment here in our city, we looked at the large-capacity areas that we are sworn to protect and serve, we looked at the different schools that we have here, inside and just outside the city, city limits, and we also looked at some of our high va, high-value commercial venues here in the city. As I said earlier, we, in fact, are a very urban environment here in the City of Salisbury, and we also cater to a large influx of individuals here on a daily basis. Estimates of our full-time residential population are just over 30,000, while our daytime population jumps up to anywhere from 100 to, estimates range from 100 to 130,000 per day. This means that we serve a variety of needs here, we serve a variety of situations, and we need to do so safely, and we need to do so with equipment that can provide safety to those men and women who have stood up and said that they are willing to protect and serve. Specifically, we would use this equipment during hostage negotiations, barricaded subjects, active shooter situations, which, actually, we have had all three of those here in the city, and rescue operations. Of note, we are, we have been for quite some time training with emergency medical service technicians, in fact, they are actually embedded in our tactical team unit along with us, and they respond out to all of our high-risk warrant service entries that we have here in the city. We have also begun training with our fire department in the event that we do have an active shooter situation, so that we can get critical medical assistance into areas much, much faster, in the event that we should have another active shooter here in the city. I would like my esteemed colleague, who's had many years of service, many, many, many instances of deployment when it comes to civilian policing in high-risk situations here in the city, and extensive training throughout his tenure with the department as a tactical team member, and now leader. Lieutenant?
Thank you, chief, mayor, members of city council. I prepared a, a little handout I'm going to pass out to you all, just to give you some reference. Um, as, as the chief said, and I'm not going to try to beleaguer some of the same points, but just to go through some of the numbers, I, as I have in here, by the numbers, 69 is the number of guns that were seized by the Salisbury Police Department in the year 2015. That's almost 70 guns that we took into our property, many of them seized on warrants and, and, and street interdiction. 53 high-risk warrant services were done by the Salisbury Police Department Tactical Unit since 2012. For the Salisbury Police Department, the Maryland State Police, the Wycomica County Sheriff's Office, I should also add the U.S. Marshal Service, in the fiscal year, I'm sorry, in the calendar year 2015, we served 13 warrants. Many of those, if not all of those warrants, there was a presumably armed suspect involved. We handled nine barricaded subjects that required the response of the tactical unit since 2012, two of them involved hostages. Two incidents in 2016 already this year where an armored vehicle would have been staged or used per our current policy if we had one available to us. One of them was a subject who threatened with a hand grenade. So these aren't, these aren't what-ifs, they're, they're probables, they're things that happen every year, year in, year out, and it's not a matter of if, but a matter of when. And to underscore everything, 31 police officers have already been killed in the line of duty in 2016 nationwide, 16 of those by gunfire. So I, I have in here about resolving armed conflicts, and just to summarize it, I'm not going to read this, but in the world of police tactical operations, it's all about movement, it's about the being able to move assets and resources into a position to resolve the conflict, while at the same time moving injured persons, civilians, and police officers who might be trapped out of the conflict. That's, that's the tricky part, that's the goal, it's all in an effort to save lives, everything we do is to save lives. And even when we negotiate, which is the majority of the time, negotiations are often successful, but negotiations can't help somebody who's already wounded, they can't help somebody who needs to be rescued, they can't evacuate a neighbor's home, they just can't. They buy us time, they may resolve the conflict more peacefully, but if somebody's wounded and they need to get out, and need them to get out now to potentially save their lives. Police armored vehicle as a whole, as the chief said, you know, these things provide a moving shield, they're nothing new, they've been used in law enforcement for a number of years. They're basically a moving shield with which we can rescue down civilians or officers, allow for that evacuation of neighboring homes, give us a position of surveillance and a place to work from, cut off avenues of escape for potential suspect, move assets back and forth, whether it be asset, in the form of personnel or equipment, and provide a safe work space for officers that are on scene. Sometimes these things go on for hours and hours and hours, we need to have officers ready to jump in at a moment's notice, but at the same time be nearby and in a position where they're in relative safety. So that's, that's somewhat of how we deal with this issue. Now, as Salisbury stands right now, there's definite need for this, as the chief touched on it, we have a lot of critical infrastructure in Wycomica County, and we, we recently got the Tri-County Council Building, which has a lot of transportation, we have the courthouses, the federal building, schools, the Port of Salisbury, Encada Oil, and Sharp Energy, the list goes on, and all of it is things that we need to protect. There's not a whole lot of allied agencies around on the shore, especially the lower shore, that have a vehicle that we can call on in time of crisis. The Maryland State Police has a armored vehicle that they would make available very quickly, however, it's in Baltimore County, stored at their range, and not always available. Ocean City has a similar vehicle, a Peacekeeper, that they receive through the government, however, their response time is equally long, especially during the summer when they're at their peak, they have to find officers, they have to get approval, then find officers who can operate the equipment, retrieve the equipment, and get it here. We had an incident about a year and a half ago that went on for several hours, we called them and asked them for assistance, after a period of over two hours, they still had not made it, and we were able to resolve the conflict. Two hours is a long, long time if shots are being fired. Wycomica County recently acquired an MRAP, and that is a very large vehicle, they know that the sheriff's office would make it available to us if we needed it, however, in our narrow streets that are often congested in the city, a vehicle that large, it's, it's over 20 tons and 20, about 23, 24 foot long, is just simply too big to get down most of our streets. So even though that's an available resource, it's really not practical to use in the majority of the cases that we're discussing. So there is a definite need for a purpose-built police armored vehicle in the area. The vehicle, that's the need, the vehicle that we're discussing is called the Peacekeeper, that's a moniker that the Air Force gave it, it was built by Cadillac Gauge Corporation for the Air Force primarily, for policing. So even though this vehicle was built as a military vehicle, its intended purpose was never combat or military in nature. This vehicle was built from the ground up to be a police vehicle, just not civilian police, military police. In the, in the Cold War years, the, the government found a need to protect the bases that had nuclear warheads on it, the Air Force felt the need to have additional security assets on their bases and airports, and this vehicle came along to serve as a response vehicle for the Air Force. It's based on a one-ton Dodge Ram truck, so we all see the F-350s with the dual tires and all, this doesn't even have dual tires, but we all see them running all over the city, it's nothing new. It has no armament, there's nothing offensive about it whatsoever, it's, it's an up-armored truck is what it is, basically an up-armored sports utility vehicle, and it is available as an agency-to-agency transfer through the program. I have attached two pictures, that is not the vehicle, that is a sister vehicle to the one that we're discussing, but it's almost identical, a picture of the exterior and the interior, similar vehicle purchased new. In the civilian market, something like a Bearcat from Lenko would be in excess of, well in excess of $200,000, a refurbished one would be well in excess of $100,000, and although you get a warranty and better ballistic protection, the vehicle itself is basically the same, it's, it's a shell with which we can respond and, and store people in here. So, that's, that's the basis for my presentation, I'm, I'm, would welcome any questions that anybody might have and concerns.
No non-starter jokes.
Questions?
Do we have to start at mine?
Sure.
I'm not ready for my question.
Okay, that's good. You're cross?
I do, but I'm like, I'm like Jim, I'm still contemplating.
Well, there's certainly a lot of information that we went over here, but the, the important thing to remember here is that we routinely dispatch negotiators, hostage negotiators, to quite a few incidents here in the city. And right now, our police officers actually set up either in a vehicle, quite a distance away from the location in which we are trying to work and make contact, or they are actually hunkered down behind the nearest civilian vehicle that provides an engine body that can provide protection for them. With a piece of equipment like this, we can keep them close to the scene, and we can protect them while they do their critical and necessary work. We have been very successful with our hostage negotiators, but we need to provide them safe operating space. In addition to that, as I started off with, I, I understand the contentious nature of this equipment, I do, but as, as your chief, I also understand that we have to be able to provide a means to protect not only our officers, but our citizens, when these events do unfold. And again, this is not something that would be, or is even contemplated for use as an offensive-type piece of equipment, this is a defensive piece of equipment, and our policy is geared towards that portion of it as well.
Is this, I know Delmar has a Humvee, that, but it's outfitted as a, basically a medic unit for off-road stuff, how well will this unit do in a situation like if we have hurricane, there's a place where ambulance can't get, is that, or is this too heavy for that?
This is, it is a four-wheel-drive vehicle, it will afford you some extra traction in, in like snow, some limited mud, but it is very, it's a, it's not an off-road vehicle by any, you know, by any stretch, it does have a little additional ground clearance if there's some minor flooding, or like I said, some snow, and there was a, a need to get a medic somewhere, that's certainly something that this would be able to afford you, but it's, it's, it's not an off-road vehicle because of its weight.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of the policy?
Certainly.
Copy of the policy?
Yeah.
Could either of you elaborate on the two incidences this year, and the, the use of the word "hand grenade," I'd like to, if we could, walk through that particular incident, because "hand grenade" just makes the reporter in the back of the room, makes her ears stand up, and I don't really want this conversation to be about those words that induce a reaction in people on tonight's Channel 47 news. So could you talk about the hand-grinning incident?
I, sure, I'd be happy to. We had a gentleman call into the police department and express the desire to kill himself using a hand grenade. That's what he told us, and that's what we had to respond to. So when we, when officers responded to his house, they had to do so, prepared for the event that he was actually armed with such a device.
So, and I'm just asking, what's the armored vehicle do for a guy in the house with a hand grenade and the officers that are, what, what does it do?
That's a fair question, now, I, quite honestly, what, the best thing it does for us is it affords us protection to get neighbors and stuff away from the house, the standoff distance for a, a hand grenade is about 1,000 meters. Obviously, I don't want my officers or any civilians within that 1,000 meters if I know he has a, you know, some kind of, not just a hand grenade, but any explosive device. This vehicle would have afforded us, if need had been there, the ability to get up to neighbors' homes in relative safety, and get people in the vehicle and away from the house without having to expose them for any undue amount of time in that zone within the blast ring. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Mike, follow-up question to you is, it's not a stay-in-place, a safe-in-place away from the windows inside your house if this thing goes, this grenade goes off, we're going to...
Not the near, no, not the neighbors, joining neighbors, and, and in the partic, this particular incident as well, it wasn't a single-family house, so he had people in the same, so it even complicated things more. I will tell you as well, too, there, there's a saying in police work, don't, in, in the military, "Don't mistake luck with skill." We have been very lucky for many years, and I have been with the police department, as the chief said. a chief for over 20 years. I have seen a great deal over my career of guns seized, but I had not seen a, the types of long guns that we have been seizing the last few years in the city, both our agency and surrounding agencies, that we have been seeing the last five years. I didn't see at all my first 10 or 15 here. So there's been a definite increase in the type of arminet of people that we're dealing with. And just because we have been lucky thus far, that doesn't necessarily translate into preparedness or the level of skill that was used at the point in time that, you know, those incidents were handled. So I just want to make clear that, yes, you know, you can look back, and we've handled a great many things, but a lot of those, we have just come out by the grace of God rather than being fully prepared.
That's a pretty heavy thing to say outside in public. You say here that 69 guns were seized by the police department. Do you think that that number would have gone significantly up or significantly down if you had this vehicle? Because I'm trying to figure out the connection between this vehicle and that number of guns seized.
The, I don't believe the vehicle's going to have any impact on the number of guns seized at all. I think it would be foolish to assume that. However, the number is there to illustrate the point of the number of guns that the officers face every single day. I think in a city our size that that's quite a few.
Of the nine barricaded suspects that require a response, is that... I don't teach math, what is that, a year? Six years, four, five years? Four years, six years if you count all that year and this year, divided by nine.
I will tell you, we didn't have one this year. We average about two a year, and that's how it's worked out. We haven't had a year since 2012 where we did not have a barricade. Most years, we've had two, one, we had three. And again, we've done the best we can, we've improvised, but this vehicle would certainly have aided us in the majority of those incidents.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my, when I saw it, now seeing the pictures, my initial libertarian response was, oh, this is, is this the definition of community policing? But I think after looking at the vehicle, listening to your presentation, and even in my profession with Walmart and asset protection, some of the things that have happened in the past couple of weeks, has, it's starting to change my mind on a few things. And I think the ultimate thing at the end of every day, in my job, in your job, is to go home to our families. And I think this, I think as far as the situations we're dealing with in this city, is going to ensure, is at least on some aspect, when they're dealing with these volatile situations, that it's going to help make sure that those, we have the ability to help those in the immediate vicinity of a situation, and we ensure that our officers go home every day. So I think that's kind of, you know, it, sometimes it takes that stuff to change your mind on things, and you're not just partisan on something. So I think based on stuff that's, you know, I've seen and know about, you know, I'm going to support this, and I appreciate you guys bringing this forward.
Please understand that your comments are spot-on, and in today's policing environment, it's not just police families that we're worried about going home every day. It's everyone. It's everyone going home, even the individuals who are in their moment of crisis. But in order to be able to do that professionally and appropriately, and being able to de-escalate the situation, we need to provide safe operating space for those that are protecting and serving.
Of the 31...
Out of the 31 officers that were killed in the line of duty, and 16 by gunfire...
You want the statistics? I have them. I'm pulling them up from the Officer Down Memorial page. One of them died in an aircraft accident, seven of them were automobile accidents, one of them was accidental gunfire, one of them was a heart attack, one of them was a motorcycle accident, two of them were struck by a vehicle, and two of them were vehicular assault, for a total of 15 of the 31 gunfire, as the other 16.
And one of those was the sheriff's deputy sitting in a restaurant eating lunch.
I was there yesterday.
The question I wanted to ask is if, do you think this vehicle will keep this from happening?
I can't, I can't answer that, to, I don't know every detail of every one of those incidents. And no, I don't think that, you know, unfortunately, we've had a lot of officers killed this year. It was August of last year before we had the numbers that we're seeing this year. And I can't, I can't honestly sit here and tell you that this vehicle, or a vehicle similar to this that many agencies have, would have made the difference. A lot of the agencies in which these officers worked have similar vehicles. You know, that's, that wasn't my point of putting that there. My point of including that statistic is that people are not afraid, unfortunately, of shooting at the police, of, you know, of taking that extra step.
Well, I do understand.
And just to underscore that, I wanted to make sure that we remember the, you know, our brothers and sisters who have died already this year. But no, I can't honestly sit here and tell you that having, you know, this vehicle would necessarily prevent that. Unfortunately, it's the patrol officer who's first on scene who's most vulnerable, and he's not going to have this vehicle. But should he get hurt and need to be rescued, this vehicle would be a phenomenal asset in allowing that to happen. And that's kind of the bottom line. It's, we're not going to, this vehicle is not going to be running calls, it's not going to be out there, you know, on a day-to-day basis. And the officers who are doing that, who are pulling traffic stops and responding to domestic incidents, are our most vulnerable officers. However, when they do run into a problem, and they eventually will run into a problem, this is the vehicle that we will count on to help us respond.
Okay, now, in responding to an officer being shot, another officer has to go out of that vehicle to get that officer, am I right?
But it could be placed between...
It could be placed between the threat and the person who's down in order to allow the people who are rescuing that officer some safety. Does that make sense?
So if the hostage taker here, or the shooter is here, they can position the vehicle between the shooter and the, or the threat and the person that's...
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody still has to pull him in.
Yes, ma'am. There's no doubt. There's no doubt.
It's still risky, but it's not risky.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I, that's all I have to...
No, it's like, the way I read this is...
I'm not knocking the vehicle, because probably definitely need it here, but do we have that much crime that we need that vehicle?
That's back to these statistics.
Could I interrupt for a second? Here, here's my, here's my issue. The chief said it very well. This vehicle is not just to protect the police officers. It can be used in a number of different ways. If we save one life, one life, that's more than, the statistics, no matter how they were killed, and I don't, they're officers. We need to support, this is another tool in the chest. It's not the Panacea that's going to resolve all issues in the police service. But I think based on the policy, and if you guys will pass the policy around, and once you read the policy, I think that as long as the tool is used correctly, we're fine. And if we can save a person who's in crisis, if we can save a police officer, or a citizen that happens to be in the wrong place at the wrong time, we're doing what we need to do as council people. Mr. Mayor, you had a comment?
Well, I just wanted to share kind of my thought process in, you know, coming to the conclusion that I was willing to support this enough to bring it to you for conversation. This is, this is a risk mitigation tool. This is one way to mitigate risk, and one way of many, it's like wearing body armor. You know, you can still get shot in the face, you know, to put it bluntly. This is one tool. This is not a crime reduction tool, in my opinion, and I'm not the law enforcement expert in the room. We've got two of them sitting at the table, and they can correct me if I'm wrong. But the way I see it is, this is about protecting life when possible. We've got, you know, I think if you look at the mechanism we're using to reduce crime, you know, we're in a city that's safer now than it was five, six years ago. We're in a city that is, been making significant progress, but it is an environment of risk out there. And this is not something, this particular tool won't protect against an ambush, like you were talking about, Lieutenant. It won't protect against, you know, the officer who responds to a domestic violence situation and is first on the scene, and it's not, doesn't appear to be a high-risk situation turns into one. But there's a lot of situations where this particular tool could be useful, and that's where it has value, in my opinion. You know, I think ultimately, there are incidents, and you can, I was thinking back to the Colorado Springs Planned Parenthood clinic shooting where officers were shot outside of the scene. Officers were injured outside of the scene by the gunman, you know, who later used these vehicles to actually, you know, corral, contain, and arrest a suspect, a living suspect, using vehicles like this. So that's where I came down. I mean, today, you can see, and there's almost a dichotomy, you know, a graphic dichotomy here. Today, you know, driving around North Division Street in Newtown, there are two officers on bikes. There were, there was a story today highlighting our officers downtown on foot and on bike, and that interaction, that community policing effort, and that interaction with people, and you can see the power of that and the impact that has on crime, and really on the feeling of safety in our neighborhoods and our relationship with police officers. This is an entirely different thing. This is, and a different and useful tool in its own right to mitigate risk in certain situations. So that's where I came down, and that's why I was happy to forward this and for your conversation.
I have a few more, if you don't mind. Laura, are you going to? You go.
It's okay. My point was that, you know, I'm reading this, and I see 69 guns seized and 53 high-risk warrant services, and nine barricaded subjects, and we've all seen news reports where those went horribly wrong. We got lucky, as you said, with every one of these, all 131. That's not to say 132nd, one of the, either one of these categories couldn't go horribly wrong. And this is that tool that can help prevent it from going wrong. Unfortunately, you don't always get to count the statistics of the ones that were prevented because they didn't happen. It's the ones that we couldn't prevent that we get to see most often. And I'm in support of this because I think there is a need. It's not, it's not a tank, it's not a big intrusive thing, and it's not being used in an aggressive way or an offensive way, it's being used as a defensive mechanism. And if there's one citizen saved, if there's one officer saved, if there's, you know, any way to help, that we can help protect you and the citizens of this city, then I'm all for it.
Do we have the other incident? Do we have any information on the other incident?
The other incident is a high-risk warrant service that we did, where this vehicle would have been staged. The target we were after was supposed to have been armed with a semi-automatic rifle, and that, I can't go a whole lot further into that because that's sort of an ongoing thing. But that is what, that would have been, that would have been staged at a warrant service that we had a lot of credible information under there.
My concern is the message that we send. I will pick up the mantle of the libertarian who put down his mantle just moments ago. When people see this, is this what I hear, is this what they mean when I hear the government turning on some people? I'm just, all I'm saying to you is what this country's going through in the last couple of years, 33,000 gun deaths in America, 66% of them are suicides with a gun. So I'm a little worried that because of a national, a national trend that brings us Fugitive Fridays on the news, that without, with this just being handed to me, I think what you see with other mayors and other city council people across the nation when this thing happens, I'm not really ready to make a decision on this until I have the ability to really delve into this and ask appropriate questions. The only other thing that I wanted to ask was, and this has nothing to do with a non-starter, but it's a Dodge Ram chassis of a Cadillac Gage Corporation that looks like the front of an AMC Pacer. Would you just rather have the $200,000 to buy yourself something that doesn't look like it's been pieced together with, with only, what only can be described is MacGyver wiring and gum? I mean, I'm just, I mean, if you're going to do this, and you want this, I've seen it, I've, you know, I attempted to get in it, but I was unable for my size and increasing girth here as I get older. But I mean, look at the thing. I mean, I'm not so sure I'd take that seriously coming down from Philadelphia.
It's not pretty by any stretch of the imagination. The size, the size is, you know, about perfect for what we need. You know, you asked a question, would we rather have the $200,000 to buy a vehicle that was purposely built for police? You know, absolutely. And I'll let the chief speak more on that.
Thank you for already saying it.
If chief was going to ask for $200,000, she'd have all mine, Sean.
Since you offered it.
Excellent point, well said.
Just to address the libertarian concerns, because I, believe me, and I'm very, I feel, I feel where you're coming from with that entirely. I brought two other pictures just to show you all. We have these running down the streets of Salisbury City every single day, every single day. This one's upside down. But every, every single day. And the difference between these trucks and the one that we're talking about really is paint. The banking industry has determined a long time ago that they were going to take the safety and security of their bank employees and the currency that was in, you know, being transported very, very seriously. And all we're asking really is that, you know, we take the same seriousness in protecting our human...
Wouldn't you say, Officer Yankel, that banks still get robbed?
No, banks do still get robbed, you're right.
I'm just asking.
No, you're absolutely right. But there's no doubt that armored, the people transporting currency, they are much safer than they were when...
It's not like the Italian job where we do...
Exactly.
Yeah, I got you.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'd be willing to go forward if there were 15 extra minutes for, and I don't have 15 extra minutes, to go through this and just be sure that I can say to people who say, "Jim, do we really need with these numbers this sort of thing?"
If I might, if we, I think we have consensus, a majority consensus, and that will give you a week to review it, and if you so choose, you can vote against it and state your reason.
To say that out loud. Classic. Okay.
So do we have, do we have consensus? I believe we do. Three, four, okay. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Do you need this back? Or can we go in there and make a copy in the mayor's office?
Kim is going to make it.
Kim's going to do it. Cool, thanks. In red. Where's mine, Sean? This is going to get so much easier.
This time.
Okay, that's the last item on the agenda I want.
We had discussions about the funding for the speaker, bringing the speaker to speak to our high schools, and a community meeting. We're piecing that funding together from multiple sources, and it's become a little bit convoluted in trying to have the United Way or any agency collect those funds for us, but it's equally convoluted to have the city accept each and every one of them. The suggestion was made today that we could do a single resolution, and I probably need to talk with Mr. Tillman about whether that needs to be a resolution or ordinance, or how we exactly we do that, to authorize the mayor to accept the donations and make the expenditure for up to that amount that it will take for that speaker in that event. So I'd like to try to get that on next week's agenda if everyone is amenable to that, so that it doesn't slow down the process and cost us the ability to have that speaker.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, whatever the simplest and most efficient way to do it, if that means, you know, you know, whatever... it, if that means, you know, you know, whatever comes in, you know, it's fine for them to spend the funds, and that's, yeah.
It's just that the city is asking for these grants, and so we are the reporting agency that has to track them and report back on them. So to have a third party then taking the money and then dispensing it, it really gets kind of convoluted.
It isn't, yes, I agree, but isn't that the convolution that we, that we face on, and other people wait as well? I'm just, I'm just asking the inverted question. Is it, if not doing it like everybody else does it, are we going to be asked to do that for everybody else that we partner with, that is, that we are the pass-through for funds?
Generally, it's a single-source donor, they're very seldom that we have five or six or more entities donating to a single purpose, and under the time constraints that we have in this one, we're trying to get this person in front of them and have the state's attorney and our police officers in front of the students before summer starts. So it's...
Didn't we have like similar situation with New Year's Eve where we had multiple donors, but then it was like multiple resolutions even after the fact? So I think even for some of those situations, shouldn't we look at...
Doing logic simple.
Similar process where we have something like that, is that, I don't, I mean...
A little smoother and a little more timely.
Yeah, I mean, just efficiency, because then that's another two minutes, three minutes, Mark's gotta stand up there and read the whole thing every time we do it, and he's not gonna get those two, three minutes back in his life.
How are we?
He may suffer more than I.
Do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like we do. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Okay. I have one more thing, since we're talking about the things. You should all have a copy of the budget session schedule, and as you will note, we have a significantly smaller amount of meetings that compared to previous years. And what I would like to happen would be the following. You will be receiving your budget packs tomorrow, and that will give a week to look it over and highlight your questions and concerns only. My intention is not to go over a line-by-line budget. So look it over, have your comments listed, and then we'll get answers to those questions during the budget session. And some things may come up during the budget session, obviously, but the intent would be to only address those issues where we have issues. And you've got plenty of time, you've got a week.
I mean, would it be more efficient course if we just like, you know, went through, put an email together, and then send it in ahead of time, and then, because I mean, you don't wanna read my handwriting, I'd rather...
You can do an email, type it if you can't write, type. That's what I do, because I can't write.
And we'll get it tomorrow?
Pardon? You'll get it tomorrow.
Yeah, if the questions are submitted ahead of time, they can be answered in the public process, but they'll have, more likely to have answers if they have the questions in advance.
That's the...
And you already received all the budget documents and the email that Chris sent out Friday night, but we'll have the printed materials for those of you that requested it tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, since there is nothing else, let's, I'll launch a motion to convene a closed session.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I do one thing before you do?
No. Sure, what? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Pretty pleased. I just sent an email earlier today about, we'll do a, that's all right, we'll do a budget press conference presentation tomorrow at two o'clock. There's an email in your inbox about that. I just wanted to remind everyone and invite everybody to be there.
Appreciate that. Do what? Motion I heard?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Mitchell, second?
Second.
By Ms. Jackson.
I'm so sorry.
Hold those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's a little late now.
All right. Motion passed, Chair will decide. Sorry.
We'll find out what's in it once we pass it.
Are you really opposing it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I didn't...